Welcome to the City of Livingston, Maryland, City Council meeting. Please quickly please tell all of the City Council members to go on the record as in attendance. Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Councilmember Will Darren? Hello. Well, welcome to everybody, it's a beautiful day, I am here. Mayor President Gasol?
Here.
Mayor Vasquez? Here. You have your form, I thank you. I would like to ask Mayor President Gasol to lead us in the floor. I'm going to give this agenda.
Madam Mayor? I'd like to pull the consent, or sorry, the payment demand consent calendar.
Since we have a request, we will pull the payment demands. I'm looking to see if we have a second on that. And as I see, we do not have a second on that, that request will be denied. Moving on to the presentation portion of the meeting tonight, we do not have any presentations and so we will go directly into the general public comment portion. During the general public comment portion of this meeting, the public may have certain concerns not obtained in the aisle that we are doing tonight. We note that according to State Law, the City Council is not permitted to respond to any comments expressed by the public. If approached, staff will be directed to follow up with this meeting, or the topic may be brought to the Speaker of the Council, the Board of Supervisors. For the履行 of this for chapter 2.14.1.0, all remarks must be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green, yellow, and red light timer at the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the next speaker to approach the podium to re-ent speaking. I do have the speakers up here, and so we'll head and move right into the public comment portion of this meeting. We'll start with Sandra Goen. I apologize and grant if I mispronounced your name, followed by John Elwood. On record, her name is Sandra Goen.
That's why there are two E's. What do you mean, Council? My name is Sandra Goen. Huh?
I stand by.
My name is Sandra Goen.
Hold on one second. The timer. And if you please speak directly into the mic, I'll tell you anything again. You may go.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Goen. Last year I approached you almost every month. Entreating you to pave the streets of Mulder, Haven, and Crestline. I presented you with a petition signed by over ninety percent of the residents of those streets, testifying that these streets need to be repaid. Many of the residents of these streets have lived there for over fifty years and mentioned that there had no repaving in that time. I warned the council that the condition of these streets continues to deteriorate, thus increasing the possibility of bodily injury as these streets have a great deal of desperate traffic. All entreaties were ignored. The conditions of these streets continues to deteriorate. The risk of injury increases exponentially. Truly, the council realizes that a personal injury lawsuit can be more costly to the council than the cost of repairing these streets. I trust that the council cares about the well-being of its citizens to say nothing of the beauty of this city. With all that in mind, I again appeal to the council to repay the streets of Mulder, Haven, and Crestline. Thank you for your attention. I await respectfully resolution of this issue. You already have my contact number, and I hope to hear from you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have John Elwood. Madam Mayor, it looks like our timer is open, so I will be sending it when we get to the three-minute mark. I thank you so very much. Next, we have John Elwood, followed by Richard Gold.
John Elwood. I hope you're probably vetting all new hires. Also like to know why it's taking so long to design pump station. Do pumps still work in the pump station? There's a control board that still operates. And I know the poop goes up the hill, because otherwise it was going down in the creek. So I know it was going up the hill. I don't know why it's taking so long, because it was started when Mike James was still here. And I've been told that it's gonna be maybe December of this year, and I don't believe it. I want to know why it's taking so long? Because the pumps still work, the control board works, the poop goes up the hill. It shouldn't take that long. Maybe they're inventing new pumps, I don't know. But I want to fix, and I want to fix now. I know you people don't work now, but now would be better than later. I'd like to know what the update is on Homemgrove Avenue. Night. Because they were out there for a little while, and they're gone. And the lights are still flashing. They were probably ones fixing Washington and Broadway where the lights flashing red full-time for what, a year? I don't know what's going on. Why do you rehire them? We already know they screwed up on Washington and Broadway. Now they're screwing up on Homemgrove Avenue and Hom. Why do you keep rehiring them? You know they have problems, and if you know it, you're stupid. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Richard Gold, and that will complete our public comment portion of the meeting.
Hello, my name is Richard Gold. I've been a resident of Livingston for thirty-seven and a half years. I hear it over and over and over again, "We're gonna fix the streets." But what happens? Nothing. I've heard it over and over again, "We're gonna fix the sidewalks." But nothing happens. Our sidewalks are in terrible state. Forty percent of this city doesn't even have sidewalks. Adds no safety to the pedestrian. No way protecting drivers, drunk drivers, whoever, to steer those cars away from the sidewalk. Forty percent of the city doesn't have sidewalks. I want to make a point to you. This is a constitution of the United States of America. We have four levels of law. This is the highest. Under it, we have federal law. Under it, we have state law. And then we have the municipal code, way down here at the bottom. The lowest level of law that we have. I just... I videotaped you guys for six and a half years. I've been bored by City Council like you wouldn't believe. This is ridiculous. Nothing gets done in this city. You had public works out at Washington Avenue and Alden Avenue. They put a shovel over here, and a shovel over there, and a shovel over there, and a shovel over there, and what happened? Nothing was accomplished. Nothing was accomplished. What a waste of time, what a waste of resources. Why don't we ever get a response from you? I'll finish by telling you, I'm on my thirty-eighth gallon of the blood, man. I've saved five hundred and seventy lives so far. Anybody else got any kind of record like that? Anybody else doing their public service and donating money? What do you got? Oh, no answer. That's the problem. You never answer, you never listen to us, you ignore what we say, and you will not respond. And we get no answers, and we are tired of it. Have a good night.
Thank you so very much, but what I will do is I will turn this over to our senior manager. As, at this point, the senior manager doesn't have anything to share. But what I will say to Sandra, John, and Richard, I thank you so much for providing public comment. And just know that we are listening and we hear you. We hear you, we hear you. And I know that with Sandra's staff will be following up, I know that. So look forward to that. And Richard, you mentioned that you're on five hundred and seventy-eight gallons, congratulations. And thank you so much.
Five hundred and seventy lives saved.
Uh, five hundred and seventy-eight lives saved, and so thank you so very much. I'm gonna go ahead and move forward to the consent calendar. And I'll turn this over to our city manager.
Madam Mayor, when you're on the consent calendar, I want to make a note that there was an error caught in item one E with the landscape services board. The contract that was given to council said traffic signals. So on the dais today and in the public binder, we just made that one stringer error and changing it from landscape, from traffic signals to landscape. We were using our senior public service contract.
Thank you so very much, and that was item one E, correct? With the change to item one E, do we have a motion to ask the consent calendar?
I'd like to approve.
Second? We have a motion and a second, I'll ask our city to call the rules. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Will Darren? Councilmember Will Darren, no? Mayor President Gasol?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Consent calendar approved before, and what is it? Uh, thank you. Moving on to our public hearing portion of the meeting, item number two is a call of the community development management decision to deny a matter of discommit for an early separation finding for a medical marijuana disentry at 5925 that 6935 North Avenue in the general commercial area. This public hearing is a continuation from the April eighteen twenty twenty three city council meeting. Have all the notices required by law been given? And are the complete files, both exhibits, correspondence, and other documents, have they been provided?
Mayor Vasquez, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'd just like to note to the record that the applicant is not here in the audience at the moment. And so I would make the recommendation that we trail the matter until the end of the meeting to give him the opportunity to show up so that we can call him to confirm whether he will be here or not. Or to take a break so that we can call him and find out coming or if there's...
Okay, thank you. What I can do is I can flip the agenda items and move forward to item number three to allow the phone call being made to the applicant. We will go through item number three, and then move through to item number two.
I think we may need a few minutes to bring up item number three, so if we could take a break for five minutes, that would be much appreciated from staff's perspective.
Thank you, we will take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
We will now resume the city council meeting. And so we will proceed with item number three, followed by item number two. And item number three is fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four consolidated operating and capital bracket. I'll turn this over to the mayor, who is our city manager, and she will introduce staff to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, we will be presenting the final budget for the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Our finance director, Mr. Ware, and Mr. Marad, Mariga, Maria, worked on it to ensure that all of the council's input from, again, the council whole session, the capital improvement budget workshop, the initial workshop that we had last week, our last council meeting, was all input to the budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ware, who will walk you through.
Thank you, Ms. Manager, Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here to see you go over into the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget we discussed two weeks ago. So this portion here just reflects those changes that were recommended by the council to be added to the draft budget on the sixth. So basically, what we're gonna look at tonight is just reviewing both the general fund, sanitation district, the capital improvement plan, balance of the remating funds, and of course, our appropriation limits. Looking at our general fund revenue, you'll see this looks familiar, this is the same chart from meeting on the sixth. Just shows the breakdown of where the revenues come from. And as you can see, the three out of the three of the revenues, which is sales tax, property tax, the move, and property tax themselves, make up seventy-three percent, seventy-two, seventy-three percent of our revenue. Get a little bit better idea of what that looks like. This is where we're at right now, broken down with all the different areas and fees that we currently have. And we're looking at a projected revenue for next fiscal year, for the general fund, only eighteen million, eighteen point seven million, approximately. How do our expenditures look? And this is the chart that you saw on June sixth showing our expenditures. And in here, you have the two areas, public safety and fire, that includes animal control as well. Makes up about seventy-three percent, seventy-two percent of our expenditure, with the main twenty-eight percent coming from administration, public works, community development. So how does that break down? Basically, what we have here shows you where all the funding goes to, what the amounts are for those different areas. Administration itself, which is thirteen percent. As a reminder, that includes not only the city council, the city manager's office, human resources, finance, the city attorney, city park, and community services. So basically, administration is everybody else that's not listed separately. So some of the significant changes that we've had for this fiscal year, or the upcoming fiscal year, public safety contract, of course, as we discussed, will be increased one percent. The fire truck lease, which we just got a request from fire regarding some of the final preparations on that, so we can assume. So that payment starts in July, so it'll be one hundred two point something thousand dollars a year. So we just round up, it's easier to keep track of that way. Based on council request, a non-represented staff, three percent quota was put into, which is about a forty-four thousand dollar increase. And we'll discuss how that breaks down, here's a minute. And then we did add the staff, public works, finance, and community services. There are only six months included in the draft. You get posted, fired, interviewed, it's gonna be January twenty-one, it's on board, so we'll only put six months for the budget. Again, it's a half maintenance service worker, one street technician, two crew leader, community services specialist, and then council. Changes that we have not incorporated in this budget are for the fire labor negotiations and the absentee labor negotiations, which are not yet complete, so that, nothing from those two negotiations are included in this. So increases, expenditure increases, these are the ongoing ones, the ones that we need to have done to cover them each and every year moving forward. Again, public safety contract, one percent increase, fire truck lease, the quota for non-represented staff. Approximately thirty-one thousand, or thirty-one thousand and forty-four thousand, come from the general fund. We did not change any of the salary numbers from the draft budget to this budget because we're pretty sure that with staff vacancies in the way that we have them, that will be covered with this staff vacancy. We added the staff allocations, which we just talked about. So overall, about three hundred and two thousand dollar increase this fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four. So on the general fund in itself, about forty-four thousand additions to the draft budget that was presented to you on the sixth, but there was no change in the numbers because of staff vacancy projection request. Fund balance is not being utilized at this point, and there is gonna be no change in the fund balance into this year to begin next. As we go on to the sanitation district, again, fiscal health is very good, the net position remains stable, all the reserves remain stable. The operating revenues are coming in, recovering costs of service. The new hybrid sewer rate schedule will become effective July one, and we'll start the new rates that council will approve for this year. How does the new rates affect us? Primarily, our revenues will be the same. Some questions came up as to why there's about a two-hundred thousand dollar difference. That's basically from new sewer connection fees and those types of things. We did capture those in the engineering report this year, so we made sure that we included those as part of the anticipated revenues. How do the expenses in the operating fund look? They're broken down here, one point six of salary. They're broken down here, one point six for salaries, one point six for capital expenses, three point six contracted services, and of course, operating expenses. Or seven point one million dollar expenditures, which does lead an addition to the fund balance for sanitation district budget. So they'll increase their net worth by the end of next year. On the capital side for sanitation and funding scheme. At this point in time, we're looking at seven point eight million in capital projects to be done. A lot of these projects are carried over from previous years with the difficulty of having some of our contractors that didn't have the staff to get the projects done. We've carried those forward to making sure that the funding carries forward as well. So there won't be any shortfalls as far as funding is concerned. Significant changes, basically. We have the new hybrid rate going into effect and the engineers' report from this fiscal year moving forward. Other than that, sanitation district is pretty stable moving forward without any issues in base fiscal year. We have our capital improvement program. What we've done is we've put a project summary in the slideshow on the screen for you, basically showing you what the five-year plan looks like. Over five years will be about forty-four million dollars worth of funded projects. Fiscal year 2022-2023 is about thirteen point six million worth of projects. And as you can see, one-time revenues of twenty thousand dollars comes from the general fund. Everything else, thirteen point three, comes from grants, ARCA, and other dedicated funds. So under ARCA, the American Recipe Plan on the funded project, we wanted to kind of show where that money was going. And what we're looking at is streets less than twenty-five percent CI. We're looking at one point one-six million. Additional road, or roof replacements for city buildings at one point three. HVAC replacements for city buildings below over five hundred thousand. The facility accessories, doing doors and gates and fireworks, essentially, up ordered in five. The connecting Main Street project is over two hundred, about two hundred sixty thousand dollars. The Jaganza fountain is about seventy-five thousand. And under storm, January, we had rehabilitation is two hundred fifty thousand. So just over four million dollars, almost four point one million dollars worth of funds coming from ARCA. How is that distributed? Basically, what we're looking at is CIP distribution, thirty-four percent for sanitation, thirty-eight percent for parks, nineteen for streets, and then storm drains, facilities, and sidewalks to make up the rest. Based on our payment management program or site master plan, those are the projects that you saw that you see in the balance of the funded projects that are listed in the attachment A. How do our other funds look? The other twenty-six, twenty-seven funds at this point, they're all special revenue, special project funds that are dedicated to specific purposes. We have updated the SB one projects for the next fiscal year. They've already been sent to, or they will be sent to the county as soon as everything is approved by council. Everything else remained status quo, which is no significant changes. Any unfinished projects from this current fiscal year will carry over to the next fiscal year. And there will not be a loss of funding because any special revenue funds one dollars just brings forward. And the projects are actually approved by council already. So we just move them to the next fiscal year. Fund twenty-eight, ARCA funds, added this fiscal year to account for and put all of our ARCA funds allocated so that we are compliant with the government. And as you saw, almost four point one million for infrastructure. And the balance is going to the council for plan allocations that you asked. How do the fund balances look for remaining funds? Basically, as you can see, the fund balances continue to remain stable. We do have, from the audit, you'll remember that we were talking about some of the grant funding that's been carried by the general fund here after year. They're not really carried by the general fund. It's just that by the end of the fiscal year, what we have to do in order to get reimbursed for those projects, we normally don't get the check until January, or July or August, or June. So it ends up booking line rotating forward, but we get back within fifty to sixty days. So that clears up here. On our appropriation limit, or what's known as the GAN limit, we're well within compliance of the GAN limit based on last year's limit, our population increase, our inflation increase. Our total appropriations was adjusted to sixty-four point five million dollars, which eighteen point six million is well within that limit. On our salary plan, our classification summary, the position we talked about earlier has been added to that salary classification summary. Basically, we're adding four point five full-time equivalent positions, three percent for over non-represented employees. And on those non-represented employees, remember that city council and city manager are not included in those. They're meant by a separate position. With that, staff is recommending that the council approve resolutions for the Lumin Grove operating and capital budget, salary classification summary, appropriations limit, roadway lighting district budget, as well as the sanitation district. With that, staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so very much. Before I go to the city council members, I'd like to see if we have any speaker slips for this particular item. As we do not have any speaker slips, I will check in with our... I will check in with our council members, and I'll start with council member Jennifer Windowsa.
I don't have a lot of questions because we've been studying and studying and discussing this quite extensively, particularly at our last meeting. We had a discussion for a couple hours and I want to thank the staff for capturing very well all of our suggestions. I had a question about the halftime maintenance service worker. And that is actually a question I had before. How do you anticipate, how are we anticipating someone working part-time in public work? Because I don't know that we've had someone.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Windowsa. So the halftime public works staff member, we refer to them as the maintenance service worker, MSW. And actually, we currently have two MSWs assigned to the Streets Division. So they're related in the amount of hours that they can work during the year. So essentially, we make them part-time. But for this particular individual, the work plan for them is they be assigned to the facilities and grounds group. And as part of their task, they be responsible for what we call park detail, opening the parks, doing litter abatement around the parks, helping our tech two, our facility tech two, full-time employee on Fridays. So obviously, city hall is closed on Fridays, and that's pretty much the main day where we can do the deep cleaning of city hall. And times when we get a call for something in the road, we usually have that person dispatched to address any calls that we get during that day. And so that MSW would be assigned to to that full-time position to assist them in undertaking anything that may come up during the day in addition to, you know, the janitorial, custodial duties for that day.
All right, thank you. And you did explain that two weeks ago, but I just didn't make mention. Okay. And then on the Fund twenty-eight, council work plan allocation, reminding us left over the Fund twenty-eight. When do we anticipate that we're going to have a discussion on how we're allocating those funds? Is there a timeline for that?
So some of those ones are already allocated when you adopted your council objectives at the last meeting. And then there's the remaining portion of that. Once we get the homeless plan put together with the different strategies, staff will come back to recommend funding those particular strategies with that particular set of criteria. How, as soon as this budget passed, that will really be my first item. I've already reached out to a few people and are putting together a very short R and B so we can get that plan done as soon as possible. I did talk with my counterparts over at the City of Nissa and at the City of Mesa. And in fact, the new Assistant City Manager in the City of Mesa, who went for Vista, and they said it can be done probably within four weeks.
All right. No, that's something anxious.
We are all anxious. Especially with San Diego's new law taking that is plain obvious. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Ware.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more second. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since being elected, even prior to me being elected to the council, I've made it very known that the reason that I am a public servant is because I am here to protect the people of the City of Lumin Grove. I am here to protect their money, and I am here to protect them. So it's no mystery to anybody who's watching, any of you folks up here, that how I feel on how we should be spending money. I've said repeatedly, over and over again, I'm very outspoken about letting it be known to everybody that my observations as a rookie politician as to the problem and the root of the problems in this deteriorating city and why it is a state that it lives in is because of bad management. And that's on part of city management and which is enabled and empowered by the elected officials here who the public voted for to do a good job for them in managing the public's funds. So I want to say that while last meeting, I had to leave early because I was experiencing an immense unsupportable migraine. I had to leave early, so I wasn't able to give some input as it took the proposed budget, the one that I'm seeing now, and which I'm glad we passed it by. But although I was not here for that because I had to leave due to a migraine, everybody knows where I stand on money. I'm fiscal year very conservative and very responsible. I put the people's, I want to put the people's money where the people actually want it spent. Never have I heard a person saying that they want a fire truck. Never have I heard a person, when I'm going door-to-door state, that they want money to be spent on suiting up city hall. Never, not once, never came out of their mouth. What I did hear is that the public wants the city's business to be done like the streets getting fixed, these broken intersection lights being fixed. They want more support for our public work guys because they see them out there busting their patooties. And they want to support them in that because in helping guys like our public workers, they're helping themselves because our public workers are then empowered to do a good job on behalf of the public, fixing our streets, fixing different stuff around town, storm drains, et cetera. That is what I heard from the people of the city. So what I see in this budget, what I see is that the council majority has directed staff to spend millions of dollars not on directly addressing the public's needs, but for making city hall more comfy. HVAC systems, roofs. The public storm drains, which were first put in the ground over fifty years ago, and because they are made out of corrugated metal, are now rotted out. They're collapsing left and right and are in need of being replaced, repaired. That the public knows of, there are at least two more residents. That's a minimum that the public knows of. At least two more residents that have followed suit of Navy SEAL Sean Carson over on Seadrill Place off of San Miguel in suing the city over failing thunderings. If we are elected to protect the public and doing our fiduciary job to wisely watch over the public's money, how can we sit up here and good conscience vote to give city hall and others, and other city buildings, which by the way, the public rarely, if ever, uses, millions of dollars in repair and not vote to appropriate that same money, which apparently we have, towards what is actually going to help and protect the public? I know I, for one, can't vote on that. I was door-to-door and I said I was here to protect the people. I was here to protect them. I was here to protect the money. And that is exactly what I'm going to do.
I just wanted to check in to see if you have any questions with that.
No, it's clear as day where we're standing, where we're prior to taking our money. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have council member Snell.
Yesterday, when I reached out, I was, I learned that our offices are still open on Juneteenth. There are a couple of holidays, Caesar Chavez holiday and the Juneteenth holiday that are important to our community in particular. And I would like to see those days recognized for our community, our workers. And so I would be in some of, in addition to what's allocated here, knowing whether that is something feasible that we can do to add those two holidays to our current holiday schedule. Include that in our budget here.
I'm from, no. We can certainly add those two holidays. We'd have to sit down with both labor negotiations and negotiate them and our upcoming contracts. But I don't think either of the labor negotiate, the labor unions would tell us no, they do not want to extra holiday for vote. I will let you know the cross-formular in this year for both the fire folks as well as the general employees. All it will do is impact sort of a short week, that particular week, those holidays. It'll be a one week of productive.
And is there anything that we need to do now to have that included in the proposed budget and is that something that can be taken care of later with instruction? You can amend the resolution that affects the proportion of the budget today. Or it can be, it can come back as an item, independent item. Since the holiday calendar was already adopted for the year, you can bring that back as a consent calendar item, if you'd like, as a separate, as a separate line item, as you would with other budgetary matters that change from time to time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have another question.
Yeah, the numbers are all very familiar and they represent things that we have been talking about quite a lot. One thing that I can't put together in my mind is that the project distribution graph on page twenty-nine. I wonder what number, what numbers go into this graph? It shows 38% on parks. And the items that I see for parks immediately before it are from American Rescue Plan. It don't add up to anything near 38%. What numbers are going into the figure for parks? And I was surprised to see that the percentage for parks is about twice what we see for streets.
Mayor Wilson, yes, the parks itself also includes the Connect Main Street projects. Includes some of the, they consider parks, some driveways and stuff like that. So the increased numbers because there are the Connect Main Street projects that are under the building.
But I see 260,000 for Main Street. Are the sum of the street, the street work related to...
So Councilmember Gasol, I think I might be able to help clarify. Is if you look at the entirety of the capital improvement program budget, there is, there is funds that are not looked at here. You just highlighted the ARPA funds. So we have playground equipment, we have improvements at... Improvements, thank you, improvements at Lumen Grove Park that we talked about when we had our CIP. So part of the, the entire is the full CIP budget, not just what I highlighted today, not just the American Rescue Plan.
I, I, I see. I was just looking for the numbers to try to see how they add up. That is quite an investment for parks. Although it's not, it's not just parks, it's, it's a lot of things that relate to the safety of people around the parks. And, and, and parks is somewhere where we've been underspending. So it's, it's fine with me if we spend a lot on parks. They have been, they have been neglected. Yeah, I, I have to say that this, this budget reflects, you know, when I look at the actual numbers, reflects what we've been talking about. And, and as far as roof replacements that, you know, you talk to people on the street, they're not going to say that the roof in the Rec Center or the roof in the Senior Center or any other roof needs to be replaced. And I think that we have a responsibility as council members to know about things that might not be well-known, to think about things that might not be the first thing that our people will, will think of. And, and as far, as far as the HVAC, oh, and also I want to mention that a roof replacement is something that it has to be done. If not this year, it would be very soon that it would have to be done. It's not like you can save 1.3 million dollars by not replacing a roof, okay? And forgive me if that's common sense, but maybe it isn't common enough. As far as the HVAC is concerned, that's something we spend money on every year if we don't repair or replace or upgrade the HVAC. So you see, you see half a million dollars spent on HVAC, but what you, what you don't see, what you might know about if you pay for heating in your own home or business, is that if you don't do the repairs and the upgrades, you end up paying more year after year after year. Or you get, or you get worse and worse HVAC. So these are things that need to be done. And if we didn't do them, we wouldn't be saving any money. And, and I want to thank staff for telling it like it is, not just putting forward the things that are going to be the most popular, but telling it like it is, telling us where we can spend our money and not just spend our money but save money in the long run. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I will do one more round of questions and final comments here. And I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
I did have one other question, and that was on the CIP project summary for the next five years. We're not projecting receiving any CPG funds. Is that just... It's not... No, we will be applying, receiving those funds.
Correct. The federal government appropriate CPG funds, we will, we will be applying to get our fiduciary of those funds, but it's never guaranteed until the federal budget is actually approved. Over the course of the years, they have been getting smaller and smaller and smaller. I think you've seen the amounts get smaller and smaller, as you've been on the DIAS. I think this last allocation was about 125,000. When I got here, our allocation was more than 300,000. So they're getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
And then just my final comment is, eating. All of the council members listen to our constituents. And what we heard loud, they want streets fixed. And we are, this budget, you know, I hope everyone here has read this carefully because if you do, you'll see we're spending millions of dollars next year on fixing our streets. And that's what people have asked for, and that's what we've been doing, and that's what we're going to continue to do. But we also have to... A roof repair is not something cushy. It's like getting new tires for your car. You'd much rather spend that money on something else, but you have to, something you have to do to have to get the tires. And if you have a 20-year-old fire truck that the wheels are going to fall off of, you have to replace it. We have to protect our, our employees and our citizens. We need safe vehicles. So none of this is cushy. It's just things that need to be done. And I think this budget incorporates all of the comments that we received at our full setting, priority setting meeting, which unfortunately, Councilmember Laverne also missed that meeting. We don't know why, but she was not there for that meeting either. So maybe she just doesn't have all the information that she needs to approve the budget. But yes, we all, this is the most important job that we have as council members, and we have all studied this budget. We have gone to numerous meetings over the last couple of months. All four of us have been at these meetings and participated in these discussions. And, and we have incorporated all of the suggestions that we receive from the public at these meetings. Councilmember Laverne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you say time and time again, deal of business meetings. And I'm very much a businesswoman when it comes to these meetings. And I'm very in tune with what it means to make smart financial decisions and what it means to make unwise ones. I'm going to point out some facts and figures because I know we like to operate in facts and favors and numbers, and the public appreciates it as well. We're spending to the tune of 1.3 million for roof replacements on buildings which out of your own lips, some of my colleagues here have said are for the Senior Center, which is currently shuttered and closed and no one can use it. The Rec Center, which our children and our seniors and anyone, period, can rarely if ever use. So we're spending 1.3 million for roof replacements on buildings. Like I said, I'm going to say this for a second time, that the public, who's paying for all this stuff, never uses. Doesn't make any financial sense. We're spending to the tune of 505,000 for HVAC replacements. Again, in buildings that the public never uses, makes no financial sense. We're spending on facility accessories. 485,000, again, places the public never uses, will not benefit from it. On a fountain, to add a little bit of salt to the wound. On redesigning a fountain, we're going to spend 75 grand. None of this makes any financial sense. I'm very much a businesswoman when it comes to these meetings. And again, these meetings aren't respectful of the public's time because we're not really making any wise financial decisions on their behalf. I just called out some numbers. You know what would really be smart? 1.3 million storm drain replacements. 505,000 storm drain replacements. 485,000 road improvements. 75,000 road improvements. I can give a big amen to that, and so can the public. Just want to point out the lunacy in all this and the no, and how this makes no financial sense for the public. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Hill.
So in the development of this budget, this is actually a work that's been in progress for several months now. We've had several community meetings and received input from the community members. We have listened hard to the input that we got there. We all identified what our priorities were, and the community identified where their priorities were. What's in this budget right now is a reflection of those tough conversations that we have. We all recognize that money is, we have a finite pool of it. And when you give up one thing, you get something else. And when you get something, you have to give up something else. And so these were hard decisions that were made, but we listened to the community about where they put their priorities. One of the things that was discussed, which I'm really proud of, is the idea of a senior center that is underutilized. Turning that into a productive program where we have senior center on the bottom and then we have affordable housing on top for seniors and family members, where a community organization can run that and provide senior programming at the senior center. It's right next to a park, it's right next to an elementary school. That is a good use of time, staff time, our workers' time, and our money. That way we will have a building that's functional, that we can all sit together and use. Those were some of the creative ideas that we came up with. Instead of just replacing an old roof and putting lipstick on a pig, we were looking forward to something, looking forward to a future for our seniors, many of whom are aging in our community on fixed incomes. And it is extremely difficult. We all know rent isn't fixed. And so it's extremely difficult to be able to age a place without having to move Arizona or Indiana. And so this was something that we're really part, is part of this budget. We've also had discussions, and we'll see more in the future, about programs for homeless, about programs for public safety outside of our Sheriff's Department. Things that will make our community safer. Those were the type of discussions that went into this and are going to be part of this budget. So those are things that we've worked hard at, we've listened to the community, we're putting those priorities first. The number one priority for, for me is to make sure that our families are safe. And so a huge part of the budget is going to be dedicated towards our work with our Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department. That's how, we need safe communities and we need to be able to have a... That's a priority for the city to provide for our people. On top of the money that's already dedicated out of the general fund, this budget reflects an increase of almost 1.3 million dollars into additional street funding. We heard you loud and clear. We are pouring almost what we've put in for an entire year out of our general fund and doubling that for next year. However, as we heard in our discussions about streets, even doubling it will maintain us at status quo. Again, this is a finite pie. We have the blessing of Recovery Act funds, but those will dry up. And then in two years, we're going to be faced with huge issues about how to maintain our streets without losing ground on what we've already been able to accomplish on those repairs. And then finally, I really wanted to talk about the fact that some of the issues that were raised in opposition to this budget are discussing issues that I wholly support the idea that our storm drains are on public property or in public responsibility, which is the city's responsibility to care for those. In some of these circumstances, storm drains are on private properties. I know that my sewer line from my house to the road, to where it connects, that's my problem. After that, it's the city's problem. We can't go around and using our public dollars, our city dollars, to solve private residents' issues. And so we have to be extremely careful on how we use these funds. And so we're not being flippant, we're not disregarding the infrastructure issues as council members have pointed out. This is, there's a huge investment in infrastructure with this. But these are finite monies and we take very seriously our obligations on these. We are well aware of the issues, the infrastructure issues. We appreciate when the city reaches out to us. I love when I get people who reach out to me and say, hey, this is going on in my street. Send those to me, let me know what's going on in your community. I am here to listen. But from the listening that we've done, and people have been diligent reaching out, this budget reflects that. And so I'm really proud of city staff, the way they've been able to stretch a dollar and try and meet all of the goals that our community has.
Mayor Wilson, Gasol.
Yeah, I, you know, I think most of the things that need to be said have been said. I really want to emphasize that two things about this budget. One is that it isn't very much a response to the needs that we've been hearing from people as well as from our staff. And, and our, the people that work in City Hall, and the people that pay the energy bill in City Hall, they know about City Hall even if the average person on the street doesn't. And, and when voters elected us, I think they expected us to gain knowledge that the ordinary person might not have and, and to give our best judgment. But we also have quite a few things that are directly connected to requests from the public as well. On streets, I want to know that every year we spend money on streets. And we've spent, in recent times, we've spent a lot more on streets than the city used to. And, and so the amount of money, if you look at very recent years, the amount of money devoted to fixing streets is quite a bit more than what you would have seen, for example, in the early years that I was on the council, or before I was on the council. And that partly reflects the fact that the streets need it more and more. It also reflects the fact that we've had SB 1, the gas tax is a huge source of revenue. We were able to devote to streets. And also ARPA is presenting us one-time money that we can fix on streets. While we've spent a lot on streets, it's been every year. It's been every year we spend money on streets, every year. In my lifetime, I expect that the city will be spending money on streets, regardless of who's on the council. It's an every-year kind of thing. And it's very hard to keep up, as others have said. Replacing a roof is not something we do every year, okay? Replacing HVAC components is not something we do every year. Those are things that we can take, we can take advantage of one-time money. We have one-time money that we've never seen before, might never see again in our lifetimes. A lot of money that we can put toward things that we don't do every year. It would be very hard to save up that money for replacing roofs, okay? And so with a big pot of one-time money, you want to take advantage of that and do things that are one-time things, or once in half a lifetime kinds of things. And, and so these are, some of these things are things that we don't do every year. And I think that's important to know because we have money in front of us that we haven't seen before. And we're not going to see them again. Thanks for listening.
Thank you so very much. And the one thing that I want to stress in this moment is that we go through a budget cycle annually. And there is a lot of work that goes into developing the budget. Not only on behalf of staff, but also gathering input from the elected folks who are sitting here today, and also the community. And the comments that are shared with us are taken seriously. When you see us here, you see community. And what I mean by community is, we all live in Lumen Grove. And the same things that you see and the same things that you feel as it relates to the quality of life here in the city, we see those things and we feel them too. The only difference is that we just decided to try and lend a helping hand. And that is the reason why we're here. It is because we care about this city. It is because we care about this city, and we care about our community. And that is the only driving force that has brought us here to make decisions regarding the budget today. I would like to take this opportunity to thank staff for working diligently on preparing this budget and taking in all of the recommendations that were brought forward, but also to taking time out to explain to us what certain funds mean and how certain funds can only be used for certain purposes. I think that's important to understand, because when you see a big number, it doesn't mean that that big number can be allocated in all places. Often there are restrictions as it relates funds, and we are responsible for making sure that those restrictions are adhered to. Secondly, I would like to thank the community members for attending our workshops, because we hold workshops as it relates to our budget, but also as we develop priorities moving forward into budget year. So, as you see this budget and how the funds are allocated to maintain, it's maintained Lemon Grove, and if there's additional money, to improve Lemon Grove. Ultimately, that is our goal. To support the priorities with the funding that we have. And if you take a look, right now, we are projecting over eighteen million for the city. And just know, if we were to look a few years back, we were only looking at fifteen million. So we have three million more in revenue that the city has realized, you know, when we take a look back. And we're doing everything that we can to touch the most important areas that need a little TLC. Just know, there are many, many projects that are sitting on the shelf that need to be addressed. What I mean by that is TIP projects, our capital improvement projects, to maintain infrastructure, infrastructure, roads, and buildings. But the funding in previous year was not there, years was not there. And so while we do have a little boost due to the ARPA funds, this is our opportunity to take some of those projects off the shelf and move forward and either improve or replace what is necessary. And there are so many more projects for the city that need a little TLC. So many projects, yet the funding, you know, does not match the need. And these ARPA funds, it's kind of like a gift to our city to take an opportunity to fix a little something, but we need to do more. But we need more funding to do that. So, you know, as it stands with this budget, budget, and the priorities that we have set, I think that we have the opportunity to embark on a path, number one. I know in one of our meetings, we mentioned that the CPI, and that's the condition of our streets, was at about sixty, but then when there was a survey done, the result of that survey was at fifty-eight. And that was before the major rains that we had here recently. So, just know that there has been a focus on fixing streets. We will continue to do that. And there's a difference between maintenance and actually repairing a road. And maintenance is required to ensure that we ebb and flow throughout our city. It's a temporary fix, a temporary patch, while we can get to actually fixing the streets, and that is necessary. And then there's an opportunity to really fix and repair a road. And with the allocation of over a million per year since I've been in this position, we're doing just that. We're fixing or repairing roads, people can see it, and they know it. And we're doing everything to not only maintain our city with the money that we have, but we're doing everything that we can to improve the quality of life here in the city. And so in this moment, I am happy to see this budget. I wholeheartedly embrace the opportunity to provide the holiday benefit that staff deserves in recognition of significant events for people. I wholeheartedly support the idea of augmenting this budget to include that today. And with that said, that will conclude my comments. At this point, we have a motion to approve the budget. And what we'll have to do is we'll have to do separate motions. When I look here at the list, we have, we have five. But we also must, if we are in support of amending this particular budget tonight for the holidays for staff, that language would have to be included. And so we have one. We have five, and the list, if you have your presentation, it's on page thirty-three of the presentation, and we can go down the list.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four City of Lemon Grove operating and capital budget with the amendment that we discussed.
Second, I'll second.
We have a motion, and second, I ask our pre-adjournment to call the roll. Councilwoman Snow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willa Baron? Councilwoman Willa Baron, no. Mayor Porzingis?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Resolution passes, four to one. Thank you. Moving on to the next item is a resolution approving the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four thousand and any classification summary, do the other motion.
Second.
I move...
Second.
We have a motion and second, and we go, please call the roll. Councilwoman Snow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willa Baron?
Councilwoman Willa Baron, no.
Mayor Porzingis?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Resolution passes, four to one. Next, we have the resolution approving the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four appropriation permit.
I'd like to move and approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second, and we go, please call the roll. Councilwoman Snow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willa Baron?
No.
Mayor Porzingis?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Resolution passes, four to one.
My microphone, thank you, thank you. I'd like to move that we approve the Lemon Grove Roadway Lighting District budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, I'll ask for the call. Councilwoman Snow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willa Baron?
No.
Mayor Porzingis?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
And finally, we have a resolution approving the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Lemon Grove Semitation District budget. So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I'll ask for the call. Councilwoman Snow?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilwoman Willa Baron?
Councilwoman Willa Baron, no.
Mayor Porzingis?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Measure passes, four to one, and the previous measure also passed, four to one. Thank you. We have passed the budget for FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I look forward to lots of work taking place on behalf of the city in the upcoming FY year. And I look forward to seeing the work marry with the list of priorities that we've developed. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, in the city council, I want to take a couple of moments first to give you the next steps. We're going to put all of these documents together in the beautiful budget book that you normally see. We will get those produced and given to council hopefully by mid-July, and get it posted up before you all get your hard copy of the budget book. And that will include the plethora of all of the key projects, as well as everything that is included in the budget. So that'll be the next step, that we're going to try and get that up as soon as we can by July one, considering some of the faculty issues that we're having to find out. And then second of all, I just want to give a hats off to Joe Ware, our finance director, who really did this on the weekends. Because as you all know, we are down finance up, and he is the finance up at a particular point in time. And I'd have to hats off to Mr. Maraga, who stepped up to the plate and helped out with the public works side of the house to make sure that it all didn't fall on my shoulders. They're a great team, they make sure those finances stay true. And I will tell you that Mr. Maraga is the one that puts in front of my face. You've got to get this fixed, it's going to be a longer term, it's going to cost us more in the long run. Get it done, get it done now, so I'm really glad he's part of our team. Thank you guys, thank you very much for making this an easy process. And I would like to thank the council for all of your time. I know we took a lot of your time in this year with three different workshops, as well as study sessions, as well as talking to a facilitator, and so thank you very much for all of your time. This is a really important blueprint for us that we follow for the entire year. So it's really good to be able to write.
And I would not go without saying thank you to our public works staff that are here in the room today. Thank you for your hard work. And thank you for doing all that you can to ensure that we, the people who live here, can benefit from the quality of life that the city can provide. We appreciate you and your work and all that you do to maintain and improve the city of Lemon Grove. Thank you. And now we will segue to item number two, which is the appeal of a community development manager to deny a minor use permit for an early separation finding for a medical marijuana dispensary at sixty-two twenty-five through sixty-nine thirty-five North Avenue in the general commercial zone. The public hearing is a continuation of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, municipal meeting. And now I will check to see if all of the notions exercised by our law have been given, and do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents? Have those been provided? Yes and no. Thank you. And now I will check with our city attorney regarding disclosures. Those disclosures could be conflicts of interest or any communications that may have occurred between the appellant or the property owner and or anyone who's involved with the project. I'll turn this over to the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Vasquez. I would seek disclosures from the council, including all expert communications regarding this matter and/or whether there are any conflicts of interest for this item. Thank you. So we will start with councilmember Mendoza.
No, I can't think of any.
Thank you, Councilmember Willa Baron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is nothing to disclose, and I'd like to exclude me from moving forward in writing on this issue.
Thank you, Councilwoman Snow.
No expert communications and no disclosures.
Thank you, and Mayor Porzingis?
I'm not the attorney.
Thank you, and I do not have any additional information to disclose. I will now turn this over to Bill Choppick, who is the special training consultant to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is a continued public hearing from April eighteenth. And the site location is sixty-nine twenty-five to sixty-nine thirty-five, Arth Avenue. This is a triangular-shaped site, half-acre site. There are two buildings on the site. One building is, has six tenant spaces, sixty-nine twenty-five to thirty-five. The other building is where the Astrite Motor is located. I put two aerials up here because you can see kind of the difference from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-three. There's a lot of vehicle parking in this site, something I noticed. This site is surrounded by a constructed barrier to the north. Highway ninety-four is the constructed barrier. To the south is the on-ramp, the I ninety-four. Highway ninety-four, on-ramp, and then east is North Avenue. This is where North Avenue ends and turns and heads eastward. So there are six tenant spaces in this building, sixty-nine twenty-five to sixty-nine thirty-five, North Avenue. This is where the cannabis dispensary would be located in this area. If minor use permit were approved, additionally, it's a medical application for dispensary. Current businesses of the project site. Sixty-nine twenty-five, North Avenue is vacant. Sixty-nine twenty-seven, North Avenue. Pro Massage, African East Barber Shop at sixty-nine twenty-nine. Rubens TV Repair at sixty-nine thirty-one. North Avenue, Gold Coast Motors. Sixty-nine thirty-three, North Avenue, San Diego Cars and Sale dot com. And sixty-nine thirty-four, North Avenue. Astrite Motor is in a separate building, sixty-nine nineteen, North Avenue. That's currently the businesses operating on site. The cannabis history on this project site is, starting with the election on November eighth of twenty sixteen, the voters in the city of Lemon Grove voted on a special being that allowed medical marijuana dispensaries in the city with the conditional permission. June first, twenty seventeen, Big Axe Holdings, the applicant, filed a zoning clearance application. And at that time of process, we had zoning clearance for early separation findings that later changed to a minor use permit. That was applied for in June of twenty seventeen. On June thirteenth of twenty seventeen, the development services director at that time denied the zoning clearance application. That appealed to the city council, and on November third of twenty seventeen, the council overturned the director's decision and approved the zoning clearance for a dispensary at this location. On December eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the conditional use permit application was applied for by the applicant. And this CUPD application was never deemed complete. However, the applicant insisted on taking this to the council. And on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, the city council denied CUPD twenty-one. And again, on September twelfth of twenty twenty-two, the applicant submitted a minor use permit application. And again, on September 12th of 2022, the applicant submitted a minor use permit application this time for early separation findings. We had the same issues with separation as last time. On November 10th, 2022, the community development manager denied the minor use permit. And on November 14th of last year, the applicant called and appealed this decision. And that went to schedule for public hearing on April 18. And that's when the council continued that hearing this evening. And the applicant's request. This is a 1,000-foot radius map. Taking a straight line measurement from project site, 1,000-foot radius, and staff found that there were small daycareers on Westview Place. So given that the small daycares being in protected use, staff denied the minor use permit application based on the findings, the separation findings that say dispensary cannot be located within 1,000 feet of protected use. So we have the small daycareers located at Westview Place at the end of the street there. They're within a thousand. Take a look at the protected uses here, up on top of the hill. Left is 7106 Westview Place, right is 7102 Westview Place. And you can see that there is a topograph difference here. Made into the findings of the last council. Project is reviewed. And also, it was discussed the actual travel distance because you can't get from the top of the hill to parking lot, straight line to the dispensary, without passing a fence and slowly, and pretty dense landscape. Way to travel would be along Westview Place to Massachusetts along Broadway. And this path of travel is about 60s of a mile or probably 300 feet. Staff utilized the simple straight line distance measurement for its determination, making the findings. That led to the denial of this minor use permit. So the applicant is now appealing to council. Staff's recommendation is that the public hearing, city public comment, adopt a resolution denying it. The city management, community development managers' decision to deny a minor use permit. 220 00 04 separation finding. That concludes the session. The staff report and your questions are answered.
Thank you so very much. And we will now open the public hearing. And I will ask the appellant, Alex Axel Holding, to come and address the council about the appeal. You will have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and you can approach podium. Thank you.
Mr. Mendoza, your podium podium on our button is broken. So Mr. Mendoza here at the one-minute mark will say one minute. Timing you with the official timer up here.
Hold on for one moment. I just need to make sure that my good chat from your comments. Okay, I move again.
Good evening, council. I try to keep this short. Start here that this is the North Avenue project. I want to congratulate you guys on the budget. I know that's a lot of work. And one of the things that I would like us all to keep in mind is the budget is money. And money comes from generating tax revenue. Money comes from opening businesses. And all that equals money to your bottom line. That often solves a little bit of these issues and challenges that living growth face, even if it's a little bit at a time. So I know that tonight you guys will be making a decision. I believe the decision pretty much should be clear. But obviously, that is up to council and the priorities that you guys have within yourselves for this community in regards to the budget. What do you guys want to do as city council members to help add to the bottom line? What would you guys as city council members like to do in regards to really showing the community that you support businesses and that you support opportunities to beautify and get buildings that were shown up like that improved? Because I'm embarrassed for that look of that building. I would hope that council would be too. And we would start doing things together that will show that we actually prioritize the budget, prioritize bringing money to the cities, prioritize opening businesses, and becoming business friendly. This project on North Avenue has started since 2017. I've had many challenges, trying to step up to each and every single one. I'm here today just to do that. I will apologize for being late. I had it scheduled for 6:30 and I was a few minutes after that. You guys went through that pretty quickly, faster than I've seen in quite some time going through that agenda. So here we have North Avenue. Can you go to the next slide for me? Some of what the building can look like over there utilizing the six tenants that we currently have. They are excited about the project, these current tenants. They've known about this and supported the project. Over the years, many of them have sat here and spoken public comment on behalf of this project. Not gonna read every line here. But I think this is important for a city council to know. These findings have already been made. These findings have been made by two of the five council members who sit on there on this dais right now as we speak. And I believe that those council members made the right decision then and that this is a pretty obvious decision now. A combination of the constructed conjunction of Broadway Avenue and the 94 freeway, West Brown on-ramp, the natural topographical slope at the western property line of the protected use barrier would require a person to traverse more than 1,000 feet when traveling between the regulated use and the protected use as measured by the most direct route around each barrier in a manner that establishes the direct access. That is the findings of two of the three council members who will be making a vote tonight. And I think those findings are common sense. Those findings also prioritize businesses opening up and beautifying areas that have been in blight for many, many years. Staff denied this project, as they said, they measured this solely by the straight line. If council had the opportunity to revisit the hearing in which these findings, and council had already made these findings, you would hear that Mr. Former council member Jerry Jones said that staff cannot make the findings on cumulative effects. I'm asking council to take into consideration his own findings regarding the cumulative effects of Broadway, which Ms. Mendoza quoted as would be going across that would be akin to running across a freeway. These are the words, these are the findings, council, and I ask that we adhere to it. If we go by the measurement of the cumulative effects, this is over 3,000 feet. These exact same three daycares were brought up in 2017. And again, two of the five council members voted in favor that those daycares were not within 1,000 feet. Here is some of the testimony in regards to the findings. City council finds the applicant's property location borders a freeway on-ramp, which, due to its unique location, partially between the applicant's property location and the protected uses, can be considered an artificial constructed barrier under LGMC Section 1732 090B, requiring a person to alter their path between the two locations. These are council's findings. I just ask that we adhere to the findings. We do what's best for the budget, which is getting businesses open and streamlining that and moving on to things that really matter on the agenda. I'm gonna do the best on my part to do that tonight. I would also like to read one of the other whereas's. The protected use located in the codisac at the end of Westview Place was bordered by a steep slope with an approximate 25-foot elevation change. Said slope situated between the protected use and the regulated use and its natural topographical barrier required any person traversing the space between the two uses to alter their path. Again, that's over 3,000 square foot, uh, feet. And these are the words of council members that I know many of you respect. And two or three of you guys are here this very evening who also voted yes that this was outside of 1,000 feet. The slope and the 94 freeway has not changed. The landscape has only become even more dense. The barbed wire fence was constructed to separate the residential use and the commercial use below hand. That is a constructed barrier doing its job, which is to create a barrier between the residential zones and the barrier between that commercial zone. I ask that we follow the rules and do what's best for the community. I know that may be hard for some of us to do, but I do believe it can be done when you think about the priorities, you think about that budget that you pass, and how much the city needs money to its bottom line in beautification of blighted buildings like what we saw earlier. Again, what was determined in 2017 has not changed. Freeway, Broadway is still there. The slope is still there. Council can meet the findings required to pass this minor use permit. The use is compatible with the neighborhood of the community. The use is not detrimental for the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. The use complies with performance standards according to Section 172480. And the use is consistent with the applicable provisions of the particular zoning district and with the policies and standards of the general plan. How do we know that we can make these findings? Because these findings were already made by two of the five council members and previous informal councilmen, signed off by the city attorney at the time.
Next slide, please.
Those are the findings that need to be made. One more. Very similar to the map I've shown earlier by city staff. Westview is a codisac with a very steep slope and a barbed wire fence that runs all the way almost from the beginning of Broadway here all the way down to Massachusetts. You have to literally go and traverse that. That's over 3,000 feet. These are the findings also made by city council members. These are the precedents that we have set to the five council members here making a vote tonight. Next slide, please. Next one. This picture's of the slope. Actually, even more dense than this picture was taken. There's a picture at the top there of the barbed wire fence. That barbed wire fence, we believe, is a constructed barrier. It was not considered in the findings previously, but I would like to say for the record, we do believe that it is a constructed barrier, follows the code, and is doing its job to separate commercial and the residential.
Next slide, please.
Here's another look at it, almost impossible. Let's just see if we can reverse that and get up there. Which is why you guys considered the cumulative effects and approved the hearing in our favor to download.
Next slide, please.
Showing similar pictures, see where the landscape is. You can see the barbed wire fence that runs again all the way to Massachusetts.
Next slide, please.
On the other side, in the uniform. Next slide, please. Here's the 25-foot slope that council, the findings made, to be a natural topographical barrier. That slope has not changed.
Next slide, please.
Here's from the back end of Westview Place there. Here's the barbed wire fence there. Unless someone is to cut through it, you're not going through it. That's job of what you're a tenant for.
Next slide, please.
I'm not gonna read it all. Those are the resolutions, just summarized. Again, this is the language that was viewed, but this decision was already made. I look forward to working with the city in regards to bringing a business here in hopes that tonight, we follow the city council's direction in the past. We move forward, unify a building, and generate more tax dollars, more jobs in this area. I am looking forward to going through the CUPD process with staff, doing our best our candidate to do that in a timely fashion, at least on my end. Again, I want to thank council for their time and say that if we are really prioritizing businesses, it should be a pretty simple decision. This decision has already been made by people who are here now and have done this for over 20 years.
Next slide, please. One more.
There are some quotes that I think are important that maybe can resonate or would resonate with some of our city council members. Jim Lowe, before maybe some of council members time, but he was around the city for quite some time. He was the city attorney at the time. And quote, "Based on the slope and based on Broadway, at this particular location, it meets the criteria. We can't unring bells around here." I'm asking that we not try to unring bells, that we put our pride, egos, spite aside, do what's best for the budget of living growth, do what's best for the community that we all care about. And that is to make common sense decisions when we can use common sense. Jennifer Mendoza also brought up, "The very first thing that struck me when you see the red line is that where someone would have to walk across six lanes on a very heavily trafficked street. I wanted to disclose, I contacted Ms. Austin, Gina Austin, my former attorney, today and asked her, based on the map, if she would add to the orange measurement." So these are words that were from Jennifer Mendoza. She cared enough, which I do appreciate, to reach out to my then attorney, Mr. Gina Austin, to ask that we add to the map, and we did that. And nothing's changed. Location is still the same. The slope is still the same. The constructed barriers, which you made findings, and which we believe the barbed wire fence, which were not in those findings, well as the Broadway are still there. Let's do what's best for businesses. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And so what I will do is I will go to the public comments, and I'll start with three senators and prosecutors, followed by Kathleen McQueen. uh, followed by Kathleen McQueen. Good evening, Mayor, City Council officials. Our Calvassias, Jennifer Mendoza, Jerry Jones, David Arambula. Let's take a scroll down memory lane. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a four to zero vote because Matt Mendoza was absent. From the council and the mayor, that the property is a thousand feet outside of any sensitive areas and uses. The reason was because of a slope and the Highway ninety-four freeway over. Nothing has changed. The slope and the freeway, they have not moved and still exist. I would think you would vote with the same measurement. These are the facts and this is the data. Do the right thing and stop stonewalling the applicant. Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen McQueen, followed by Jerry Jones.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, I'm up here in support of the project. Um, I know that it's been reiterated that in two thousand and seventeen, we did, um, go through the same maps and the same, um, measurements. So I'm hoping that, um, City Council will do the same as in two thousand and seventeen. Um, I understood that staff had to go by their straight line, which I understood. So I, I understand why we have to talk about, um, boundaries that exist, the slope, ninety-four, and all the people that have already voted for this in the past. Um, I'm hoping that we can work together, clean up the blight that's over in that section. It is a good use for the property as it's right off of the ninety-four and non bothersome to really anyone in the community. Um, and so, yes, I'm in favor of the project. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, next we have Jerry Jones, who will complete our, um, public comment for this particular agenda item.
Twenty seventeen, uh, council approved, you know, similar to this one property. I made that motion. I felt that it was a public benefit, but this dispensary is open, so it seems possible that it has to be. In case my motion to approve on the cumulative effects related to the property as described in Measure B. That decision turned into business travel measure. That was a discretionary decision, clearly within the council's power and curators' view. City attorney made it clear that the decision only required that situation, have that and do not set a precedent, which I can't, but any future council may use or have that council. While the decision was created and right for the party, I assure you that it is not right for the day or for this council. First, there are two dispensaries open and clear on the property. There's no public benefit, thus no reason for the council to consider anything of strictest interpretation of the law. Second, the decision in two thousand and seventeen did not set a precedent. It confused the interpretation of Measure B. More than once, the topographical consideration of my motion was presented as a precedent, separated from the cumulative and the barbed wire. More than once, the city has been dragged into court because a plaintiff misunderstood or chose to confuse the action taken, uh, at that appeal. Council decision tonight must remove that community in the ordinance by denying this appeal as a first step. The decision belongs to this council. You are not bound by the previous decision concerning this property. Your fiduciary role obligates you to protect the public's interests. First, you must uphold the spirit of Measure B with the strict interpretation of the business measure to protect sensitive properties, children, and journeying native visitors, spread and buried. Second, you need denial. Here's a, and we do, created by the decision. Finally, council must update Measure B with changes to clear up a situation that history has proved to be expensive, problematic, or taxpayers' income. This can be done by moving or approving the vague business travel language going through, as both slides were mentioned. I urge you to protect taxpayers' living growth as this appeal directs staff to move back to business, modifications of the kind of this ordinance. This is your responsibility. This is your duty. It doesn't belong to anybody else. This is your discretion. You think it's not your discretion? Go and look at the decision the court made on the seven three oh nine Broadway. Will we deny that? Let's see clearly. This is within your.
That is, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Before I get to the round of questions, I want to back up to the previous slide here. Does everyone can see it? So actually, it's, um, the second to the last slide. Of, um, the applicant. Yes. That one right there. So there were some comments made tonight by the applicant and one of the speakers. And the comment was that I was here for this meeting. And the fact is, and I'm looking at one of your slides here, and it has me listed, it has, um, me along with Jennifer Mendoza and David Arambula and Jerry Jones listed as present for this particular agenda item, and I was not here. And so I just wanna make sure that everyone is aware that I was not here on this date for this particular agenda item, as you can see here on the, um, slide. But also, um, I believe that, um, attachment E of the agenda item, I was not here. And in fact, I believe that at the time, Mayor Phil Tim Jones ran the meeting because I was not present. So I wanted to make that clear. I will go ahead and do the first round of questions, and I'll start with, um, Councilmember Mendoza.
First of all, I wanna reiterate that it was, uh, the appropriate decision by our, um, community development manager to deny this. Um, in fact, I would've been really upset if he had said, "Oh, council approved this before, so I can approve it now." Um, it was very clear, um, that this decision, prior decision, did not set any precedent. Um, that being said, um, I've come in to this meeting with an open mind. Um, and I, um, that, that I'm not just going to follow precedent. I'm going to listen to the applicant, to what my other, my fellow councilmembers had to say, to public comment, and to staff's report before I make a decision. Um, not many people know this about me, but I, I'm a professional softball umpire. And, um, as an umpire, sometimes you have to make judgment, judgment calls. And there have been times when I had to rethink that judgment call and reverse my decision. And I'm, I'm just saying this as a, um, to preface of what my decision is going to be tonight. Um, one concern I have is if we follow the applicant's logic and our previous decision and, uh, do the, what is on the map, the red line, following that logic, the property at the bottom of the slope would get a zoning clearance for a medical marijuana dispensary. Now, when we made this previous decision, I was concerned about the, the crossing on Broadway from one side of Broadway over to this, this property on the corner of North and Croppen. So from the, um, south side of Broadway to the north side of Broadway. I do not, I never considered the slope an impediment, and I never consider, and I do not, to this day, consider a chain link fence with barbed wire, um, a natural impediment. A fence can be very easily taken down at any time. And vegetation on the slope can be mowed down. And, uh, we've all seen, uh, shortcuts through living growth, down hills, down canyons, and back up again. So I'm going to concentrate on the crossing at Broadway. And as the applicant stated, I, nothing has changed at that intersection. If, and anyone who would cross there is, and, and there are people in this community that would cross there, um, it would be crazy to, to cross at that intersection. Another thing I wanna say is that if I would even, if I would ever consider, um, overturning, uh, or approving, uh, the appeal, we haven't talked about whether, um, the applicant, well, as part of the applicant's, um, permit, we would have to have some serious sidewalk, uh, sidewalks, um, crosswalks, crossing light at that intersection before I could ever, um, approve, uh, improvements to that building there. Um, the other thing I'm concerned that is a concern in my mind, and this is the last thing I'm gonna say, I don't wanna go on too long here. I'm gonna give my other councilmembers an opportunity to speak. Um, we do, we really do need to hold firm to protect our, our children. And that's why this ordinance was written the way that it was. If we, we have to think about if we give, if, if we give in on this, and I, I always, every decision we've made for every, um, zoning clearance application, we need to stick to this one thousand feet straight line measurement. Except if there is a constructed barrier. That's, that's my, uh, interpretation of this. So that's what I want my fellow county members to think about, is that barrier across Broadway, and is that an impediment? Thank you.
Councilmember McQueen.
I wanna thank everybody who has stayed in this meeting till now. Everybody who is watching this meeting in live stream. There's something that I have to say. One, I agree with the applicant that this case is very simple and very cut and dry. The law is what the law is. I'm taken aback by something, and I wanna address it. Because as somebody who was elected to be up here and is in a full position of power and authority, there are some things that just need to be said when they need to be said. Tonight, we heard a public comment from former city councilmember Jerry Jones. And now, I never, ever go after the public. When they come here and they exercise their freedoms to express themselves, to come criticize government, to come criticize my work as an elected official, or anybody else here, that is people's rights to do that. However, for a recently retired councilmember of over twenty-five years, I will make an exception. Especially when they were in a position of such extreme power and had power and say, over the thousands of people of color that blessed and called this great city home. But let's bring it back to the public comment that we just heard a couple minutes ago. A recent former councilmember, Jerry Jones, is asking we be more strict with the interpretation of the law with one applicant than others. Now, this is all audio recorded. They are on tape saying that we be more strict, come down harder on somebody than others. Now, I have to point out for those listening who maybe don't know this audio, that same councilmember who's urging the discriminatory application of the law is an older white male. And the MMD applicant is a young black entrepreneur. Now, I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if I didn't point out that blatant and overt discrimination on the heel of Juneteenth, a national holiday that celebrates and empowers our African-American brothers and sisters. Now I have some more comments. Cause we're gonna go another round. That's going to express very clearly how I feel about this agenda item and all my constituents will be able to understand my vote. But for right now, I just wanted to point that out. Let that soak in for everybody who's here and anybody who's listening, what we just heard itself. It's a shame. And I'm saddened that somebody like that, who had urged that we be discriminatory towards a black male, whereas we're not the same with anybody else, that they held a position of power in this community for so long. That is a shame.
Councilmembers, no?
So I'm really looking around back in two thousand and seventeen, and I am super perplexed as to why, um, what were the items that made the application incomplete and why this particular business owner didn't comply with them? But if, if this is such a valuable, uh, thing to have a CUP, to be able to build a dispensary there, what on earth kept him from building it the first time around when he did have the permission and when he did get those things? Is there a staff person who can speak to that or?
I, I cannot speak to why the application was incomplete. However, what I can speak to is that there are two separate processes that we're talking about right now. The first one is the MUP, which is the appeal in front of you today. If the MUP is granted, then, then the applicant can move forward with the CUP. And so that CUP process, that's what you're identifying as the incomplete that happened. Um, and we're only referring to the MUP process today. But I do understand that the CUP was incomplete. Um, and it was moved forward to hearing regardless of the incompleteness and that recommendation of denial, um, happened. Um, that staff recommended the denial and that the city council agreed and denied the CUP.
The signature, um, recollection is correct. Um, neither Mr. Fellows or Mr. Toppet was here, but signature and I were here. And there were some incomplete items for the conditional use permit that wasn't given by the applicant, giving, making staff in a position that have to recommend a council deny.
If I might ask, uh, the same question to, um, Mr. Williams, why didn't you just complete that application? The CUP application? Why didn't you just complete those items? I don't understand.
Um, what I can do is I can, well, um, if I want to approach tonight so that you may provide comments on why you didn't do the work.
I respectfully disagree that I did not do the work.
I respectfully disagree that I did not do the work. We, that you listen back to the tape, Councilmember Stone, you will see that that work was completed. Matter of fact, you recently were a part of a vote for two dispensaries that were approved without doing some of the things that I was asked to do. I have always spent the North Avenue alone hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to comply, not a hundred dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the finish line is always smooth. I'm doing the best that I can do for work with the city staff that is here and current at the time. But I believe the records will reflect that I have been treated differently than other applicants. I wish that wasn't the case. I'm doing what I can do on my end.
Can you just identify specifically? My understanding is that there were four outstanding items. So which of those four items did the other places get that you didn't get?
For example, you, one of the items was we didn't have the community liaison in the operations manual. Staff received the community liaisons with the packet as well as, I believe, three prior times to the hearing. At the hearing, they said that it was not in the operations manual. If you recall in the last hearing, Gina Austin stated that she did not complete her operations manual because she likes to keep things secret and things outside of the public, which I don't necessarily disagree with. But those were things that were asked of me as an applicant that was obviously and on the record not asked by Gina Austin. She gave an excuse why it wasn't in there and staff still approved, the council still approved her project.
Any other three items?
The other item was a a wall height, which we told staff that we would have no problem giving it at the building permit stage, it was nothing to hold back the process of the CUP. If city council and staff recalls, the reason why it was pushed forward was because city was behind on staff and the Permit Streamline Act engaged. So we asked for a public hearing as was our right to the law. The other items were all very, very minute items. One of the items was in the operations manual again, that stated we did not give staff the opportunity to investigate our words. It was literally two sentences, which I later turned in once it was clear. But they're very minute. And I think the records will reflect that there should be no reason why the permits were held up for the items that staff considered incomplete.
Thank you so very much. I'll move on to Mayor Bozeman Jackson.
Thank you. First, I want to bring up something that I don't think has been brought up. I think probably some or all of you noticed in the, that have written public comments. And one of them is from, is from Jack Cousteau, not to be confused with the famous diver. He's actually was a community college professor that I knew a while back. But the Cousteau Family Trust owns, he's a property that's pretty close to this piece of property. And Jack and Celeste Cousteau say, among other things, we are property owners at 6969 North Avenue, mentions some of the problems in that area. But what I found most concerning was where the letter says later, if we have any problems that can directly trace to this business because of the clientele, we will file a lawsuit against the city. It's, it just goes to show you that often this council is faced with a situation where if we do something, we'll get sued. If we don't do something, we'll get sued. And so, so I think it's, the answer to that, I think, is that you do the thing that's most likely to hold up in court because you very likely will be sued either way. So the question is, are these concerns from nearby property owners, are these something that we should be concerned about? And if we're concerned about legal action in the city, which, which is the greater danger? I wonder if anybody can comment on that.
I think the best approach, always, or from your perspective should be, what does the code require of you in making the findings that are in front of you? In this case, the findings are included in the staff report. And the recommendation from staff is to deny the appeal. However, the, the finding that I think is most relevant is whether the approval of the proposed use will violate the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter for distant separations between establishments which dispense process for cultivated cannabis and separations between establishments which dispense process for cultivated cannabis and other specific regulated or protected land uses set forth in this chapter. Reading that in conjunction with the separation findings that are necessary in section 17.3209OB, which states, "The measurement of distance between uses will take into account natural topographical barriers and constructive barriers, such as freeways or flood control channels, that would impede direct physical access between uses. In such cases, the separation distance shall be measured as the most direct route around the barrier in a manner that establishes direct access." So the finding that you have to make is whether there is a sufficient separation between the protected use, which is daycares in this situation, and the proposed MMD or the cannabis dispensary in this case. And whether it's sufficiently far enough away, 1,000 feet away, in order to grant the MUP. You are not granting us the U.P. today. If the MUP is granted, he will move forward, I suspect that the applicant will move forward to try and achieve a CUP. Once the application for the CUP is complete, that will come back to the city council for review and approval to determine whether the CUP is appropriate and has met all the requirements of the code. So today, you're just looking at the MUP, the separation findings.
And if I'm understanding correctly, the concerns expressed in this letter would be more relevant to the CUP process than, and what we're doing right here.
There are, oh, the letter that you just read from the public? I, I think there are some things in there that are, you know, that'd be considered relevant to your decision today, but based on the findings that you have to make, really, it's the, it's the distant separation findings and whether there's a sensitive use within 1,000 feet of this property line. So the, the personal touches, the, whether this is appropriate here, whether there's enough parking, whether there's enough landscaping, what it looks like, that's all the CUP process. So that will come back to you and you can analyze those issues once the CUP application process is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do another round of questions and I'll start with Councilmember Anderson.
I don't have any other questions, but I did make some notes that were very similar to what Councilmember Snow brought up. And that was, there were three, about three and a half years between the the CUP application on this project and the city council denying the project for not being complete. Three and a half years. And then after that, it took another year and a half for the applicant, applicant to submit a new minor use permit. So that's five years. This has been dragging on for a really long time. And I, I just can't help but think that if the applicant really was serious about moving forward on his property, that he would move forward a little bit faster. So that's just, that's just a comment and a concern that I have as I make my decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Aaron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My thoughts are, I believe the law is in favor of this minor use permit being granted. I believe that if the council majority goes the way of not granting the MUP, that they're making an error in their interpretation and application of the law and that an insistence on not conceding to that error and doing the right thing is going to unnecessarily cost, continue costing and hurting the public and lost revenue, actual impossible legal fees, lawsuits, costs, expenditures, and wasted staff time.
Councilmembers, no?
Looking at the separation findings that we need to make today, I actually went out and drove this area. And so my, like, so I'm looking to see if it's an actual barrier. And if you were talking about the sensitive uses being on the other side of the freeway, I, I would agree that that would be a barrier. There's no way you're, you're supposed to jump across that barrier. However, to this location, there is a road that goes right there. You don't have to cross the freeway to get there. You don't have to do anything except for cross a street. There's a lot of lanes on that street, but all you have to do is cross the street. There's no actual blockage there. The other side, yes, there's a blockage. So if it was on the other side of the freeway, that would be an issue. But for me, barrier means barrier. And it's not, there is no barrier there. There's actually a street that facilitates being able to go up there. There's a Burger King right across the street. There's a lot of people who have access in and out of that. There's no barrier there. So for the separation findings, I, I, like Jennifer Mendoza, don't believe that the 25-foot slope is that big of an impediment or an impediment at all. I don't believe that the fencing is an impediment or a barrier to it. And I, and there is clearly access and it's clearly accessible. And so I don't feel that I can make the findings that it is there. I do appreciate the business owner's diligence in trying to pursue businesses here in Lemon Grove. I, my hope is that people find a location that is suitable for one of these types of businesses. But these are three in-home daycare centers. It's not these longstanding in-home daycare centers that provide much needed childcare in our community. We have a responsibility to look at those sensitive uses and protect them. When we did pass Measure B, it says 1,000 feet. It does not say public travel. And the only thing that we can consider are those barriers. So I think it's clear what the law would require us to do.
Mayor Bozeman Jackson?
Okay, this, this is not an easy one. Not that most of the issues we've dealt with are easy. There's, there's a few things that I, that I think we need to mention. One thing that's very important is that we've learned a lot in the past five and a half years. And we have had experiences where we learned more about the importance of the 1,000 feet. So I would be very concerned about trying to alter the 1,000 feet or anything that could be perceived as weakening 1,000 feet. The barrier that is relevant is, would be Broadway. But Broadway has a crosswalk. And Burger King, it's go Burger King a lot more than they go to the daycare. And, and, and I think that it's, I think the fact that Burger King is, is right near it and the kids do in fact go Burger King indicates that kids do in fact have access to that general area. And I'm, I'm just very hesitant to make any exceptions to the 1,000 feet. If, if, if there, if there was a barrier that could, that could be applied, it would be that bank, that fence. But as has been pointed out by others, the fence isn't necessarily permanent. And sometimes people make paths. And some, you've seen a few around town, shortcuts. And as for the issue of discrimination, I think this one, I think this one should, should cause us to stop and, to stop and think. Every child is equal. Every applicant is equal, regardless of who they are, where they come from. And it's important to note that if you take a look at Westview Place, that's the heart of our East African community. Westview Place is a street that has children of color. I don't know if it's for a fact, but I would guess that most of the children in the daycare and perhaps the daycare owners are people of color. So consider this. Some people might say we're discriminating if we don't agree with the applicant. Isn't it just as likely or more likely that people would say we're discriminating if we allow a dispensary within 1,000 feet of a daycare center on a street that is known to be a location with a high number of children of color? That would be more discriminatory, notorious in, in my, in my reading. I think it's important to stop and think about these things. Every child is equal, just as every applicant is equal. Cases have to be considered on the merits based on the law. Once in a while, there's a provision that does allow for exceptions. You have to be very, very careful. Be very, very careful about, about exceptions. And I think it's an understatement to say that we have in fact learned some things in the past five and a half years. Thank you.
I hesitate to say something about this particular agenda item because I'm really taken aback by the fact that the highlight, the, the language that's used really to put a barrier here with this particular item is discrimination and black versus white or color versus white. When in fact, the city of Lemon Grove is the most diverse city in the entire county of San Diego. And you have a mayor here that is black. And you have a city manager who is Latina. And it is a disgrace to hear that kind of language roll forward in this city council meeting. At the end of the day, it's about the law and the law that is in place. And the law says 1,000 feet. And the thought is, perhaps you're looking for an exception to the law that is in place, largely. And as I mentioned, and, and I think everyone knows here that I was not in this seat when this particular agenda item came forward, this is an opportunity for me to take a look at the timeline here. We're looking at 6/1/2017. And now we are, 6/1/2017. And now it is June 2023. And this particular project is still on the ground. What we want in this city is tax generating businesses. And on a personal note, I feel like with this business not moving forward as it should, this city is being held hostage regarding the tax dollars that can go into our general this city is being held hostage regarding the tax dollars that can go into our general fund. Now, that right there is not okay. It's not right. Because if this particular project was on track as it should be, then it would be open today and it would be generating tax dollars. But it's not. And this city is missing out on tax revenue because it is not. And so regarding comments of discrimination, that does not exist here in this city council. And nor will it ever exist while I'm in this seat. But also, as elected leaders, we are, we have been sworn in to uphold the letter of the law. We didn't create those laws. That, that law, Measure B, came forward through the public. It was a public process. But it is our obligation to adhere to the law. So those are my comments. And I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll see if we have a motion to close the public hearing. But before we do that, I will give the appellant five minutes to read.
That was interesting. I would like to say I'm not particularly surprised by what is being said from the dais based on my experience. Businesses are still on the ground because we have individuals, whoever they may be, who are stonewalling the projects, and that's obvious. The mayor, I still have not heard, I don't think anybody has in this room, who have called you on the alleged bribe, because you seem to like to make things up from this dais. It's a shame. The goal here is to open a business. I know you guys are gonna do whatever you'd like to do, but the findings were clear. The findings were clear. You guys, mayor, made those findings. You were there, mayor. You might have forgotten. I, I think I would, if I was you, check your records. Because that was shortly after the incident at David Aramis' house, which you did not disclose. You were there on September 9th, 2017, and you were for a motion. So you know exactly what was there. The record was stated. But I'm not here to waste your time, nor mine, because you guys have already made your decisions. It's simple. The findings are the findings. You guys made those findings. You don't think it was a slope, but you signed your name, Ms. Jennifer Mendoza, to a slope. I do find it very interesting that Mrs. Gina Austin was able to get a call from Ms. Jennifer Mendoza. And the slope, as well as the Broadway, was very concerning, to the point you made an X part tag and you released that. Again, the records will show it. I'm not gonna hear the threat that you guys know I've been here since 2017. I'm not going anywhere. And the history will say that just because there is a person of color does not mean that there's other outside being oppressed. Matter of fact, history will say they would use people of color to oppress those of color. So please do not get up here and get on this stage and act like I am not being discriminated against because you are black. That is wrong, man. I know what the records state. I know what will come out eventually, and so do you guys. So what I will say is, the best thing that happened to me is some of the things that the mayor has said. I, again, I welcome any and all investigations and believe you guys should be very conscious of what you put your names to, because the findings are the findings. And that day, you guys said for oh, yes. But then after I sued, after being assaulted, then now you wanna take it away. Those, the, the, it's not a fair, not a duty, not a destructive, come on. You guys are wasting your own time talking about priorities to the budget. I'm not gonna waste my time up here and start reading all that fluffy stuff. I'm gonna give it to you straight. This city looks like this because of you guys out here stonewalling and putting your guys' ego and pride in front of the business of the city. And it will come back to you, and it is already coming back to you. Unfortunately, it is also coming back to the people. You can put a smirk on your face, keep it, but the history will tell itself. I promise I'm on the right side of history, and you already know what side of history you're on. You are now brink of disincorporation. Begging people for money, but you can't get the businesses up that are here trying to get in front of you because your ego and pride are there. You got someone making $300,000 passing you notes. I want those notes as public records for the lawsuit that will be filed for the discriminatory action. I am due a body that is unbiased. There's no way this body is unbiased. You and I all know it. You're an attorney. And I'm telling you, I do appreciate questions, because in five years, you are maybe six questions. I do appreciate that, Ms. Snow. But what it tells me is that you are here to do their business and not the people, when you cannot see the findings read by the city attorney. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Do that, Ms. Parker.
Thank you so very much for your comments. I will check in with staff before we go to the public hearing to see if we have any comments this year. I'm checking with my planning staff to see if there are any comments. There were no questions from the city council, so I don't think there's any issues that we need to address. I do want to let the entire council know that the conditional use permit that councilmembers have brought up, it was at 4/20/21 city council meeting. And you can get past council meetings on our agenda on our website, so you can see for yourself the stack report as to why that item wasn't. Mr. Williams characterized, who does it?
September 9th, 2017, the mayor of West here. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you so very much. And so now that we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Understood. Would be appropriate to dismiss the public comment?
Uh, we are, we, we have completed the public comment portion of this particular agenda item. So we will move forward, and with that said, I would give a motion to close the public hearing.
I second, I second the vague of letting somebody do the public comment, since this is a very important.
Do we have anyone here who would like to open this up for more public comment? I think we already completed the public comment portion of this particular agenda item.
Well, we haven't closed the public hearing. I, I think it wouldn't hurt. I, I believe this is, I believe this is, it's just a late entry. I, once in a while, we do let people turn in their slips.
Yes, I agree. And we have a speaker's room here. And so it's, and I call it Donna Wood.
Donna Wood. Every time he tries to open the dispensary, you poo-poo it. What about the dispensary he wanted to open? The reason they declined it is because there was a dirt trail up a hill so the little children could get to their home. Instead of teaching the children to walk on the sidewalk up the, the other side of the hill, you told them, no, you couldn't put, put a dispensary there. Because of a dirt trail, the children walked up. Now, does that make any sense? Hell, no. But you did. He put money into trying to get this piece of property to set up a dispensary. Oh, no, we can't do it. We got little children to walk up the dirt trail. What does that mean? There is no protective whatevers in the area. But the little children had to walk up the dirt trail instead of walking on a sidewalk. What's safer, a dirt trail or a sidewalk? I'd say a sidewalk would be safer than a dirt trail. Thank you too much.
Thank you so very much. And we do not have any other questions. So at this time, we have a motion to close the public hearing. So.
Seven.
I'm sorry, to call the roll. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember Michael LeBaron?
Aye.
Mayor Purcell Gasson?
Aye.
Mayor Haskins?
Aye.
I vote for the opinion. Thank you. And now we will deliberate, and I will start with Councilmember Mendoza.
The only time that we've ever made exception to the 1,000-foot rule was from Mr. Williams, was from the applicant. And then he stands here and accuses us of discriminating against him. We, we went against our principles or our, our only ordinance at that time. And here we are, seven years later, or six years later. And he did not take advantage of that opportunity. As time has shown us, we have been better served to, to stay with the ordinance, the 1,000 feet. Straight line measurement from property to property. And as I previously stated, following the, this line of logic, two, two of, of a possible dispensary could be located directly behind the property because there's a steep slope and a chain link fence with barbed wire running. That's, that's the applicant's logic. And that does not make any sense to me. So I'm, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Aaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. Prior to the applicant getting up here and saying that he is going to see the city in court, I made my opinion clear. I'm going to refrain from saying anything further, meaning that this is gonna end up in court. And I just think that it's lamentable that the council majority can't make a smart business decision if their lives depended on it. And if the public's money depended on it. It's lamentable. And the people that are gonna be paying for that inability and incompetency is going to be the hardworking taxpayers of this city. That's the sad.
Thank you. Councilmember Snow?
So I'm going to the separation findings and looking at them and seeing whether or not there's a barrier. And there's obviously a clear being able to arrive at that location. And so I don't think I can make the separation finding. These are decisions that are on like topographic maps in the basis for it has no regard to the color of someone's skin. I'm sorry if it feels that way. But I have also approved, almost all the other applications who have that been across the finish line have been from communities of color. Ms. LeBaron has voted against at least two of the dispensaries opening up in our communities, two of them. And since I've been here on the dais, and it's been a minute since I've been up here. And she has voted against them, against business decisions that would bring a lot of revenue into this city. I have heard a dearth of her concern regarding the traffic that would come here that she expressed on the other cases. I've heard a lack of any consideration for the children that are within this 1,000 feet. And so I'm concerned that, you know, I, I just know my concerns as, as to the objections on the other side. But I think that the separation findings can be made and should be made, but there is no barrier here. And that it is within the 1,000 square feet. And I would move to adopt a resolution denying an appeal of the C D M decision to deny M U P dash 220 dash 004 for early separation findings.
I would second that motion.
Uh, thank you. And if you have a motion and a second, I will report to Mayor Purcell Gasson.
I think everything I could say has been said, and, and, and I am ready to vote.
Okay. Well, if you have a motion and a second, I'll ask our, our, the clerk, today to call the roll. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember Michael LeBaron?
No.
Mayor Purcell Gasson?
Aye.
Mayor Haskins?
Aye.
The appeal to uphold the community development manager's decision is denied. Is denied, uh, 4-1. And Mr. Williams has ten minutes for appeal? Yes. The attorney, I, I.
I apologize. It's not a ten-day period to appeal because this is the last decision maker for this item.
Thank you. Moving on to the city council, please, and report. The section of the meeting is dedicated to the oral reports from the city council about meetings attended at the expense of the city. The report should be a brief summary of reading included in the report as a city official. As a reminder, we want to be careful to keep these comments brief and safe in the boundaries of the round app. This includes matters that are not on the agenda. I will have two minutes per report. I'll start with Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, okay, we haven't done this in a while, so I've got a few things to report here. I've attended and managed the last two city food distributions at the Red Center on May 20 and June 17. We are still serving close to 200 families each month. I attended the Heartland meeting on May 25. I've attended 40 sandbag transportation meetings, May 19, June 2nd, and June 16. The last meeting, I'll, I'll list it for you on that one, we received a public transit report and the M T S and N C T V operating budgets. On Saturday, I attended the Tom, the celebration of life for former council member Tom Clavie. And I just wanna say that I, I've been going to the farmer's market every week. And since it's moved to the promenade, we've had over 100 people for Danza Park. Uh, we've had over 100 people coming, and the food practices, their sales are, are just really up. So it's been a real success for our, for our city.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Councilmember Aaron. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of residents discovering through community conversations that more groups of Lemon Grove residents have filed lawsuits
have filed lawsuits against the city over broken storm drains they strongly believe to be part of public infrastructure, and therefore, the responsibility of the city to repair. I have had meetings with community members who are very concerned that the city taking a position similar to the one that the city took in the case of Sean Barson and the broken storm drain in Seigal, Seigal is going to result in their tax dollars getting spent on extensive renovation and legal fees the same way it was used in the Barson case. Now, I've had a meeting to listen to people's concerns about this. And because of that, I would like to ask if my city council, if any of my city council colleagues would be in agreement to agendize a conversation to discuss storm drains and the city's plan on maintaining storm drains and addressing these cases that by the sounds of it are continuing to pop up. Of course, whatever we can legally discuss, however, people, like I said, through community conversations are finding out that there's more groups of people who are suing us over failed storm drains, that they claim the city's fault to face.
Do I have anybody's support on agendizing a conversation on storm drains and what the city is going to do to address fixing them? Bartlet, okay, your two minutes are up now. Thank you so very much. Next, we have Councilmember Snow.
I too have been attending the Thursday farmers markets, which have been a round sounding success, and I just love being there and taking my granddaughter. My husband is sporting one of his Lemon Grove farmers market t-shirts, we got for Father's Day. On six nine, I attended Leadership Day over at San Diego Elementary School. It was great to see our youth in action, and they were in action. They were the stars of the show. It was great to see all the wonderful clubs that they've created for themselves, very proactive in designing their education. On June sixteenth, I attended a mobile home working group to try and come up with solutions for naturally occurring low income housing in our communities and protecting that. I also attended June Tea Celebration this weekend. I too participated in the food distributions. I attended several metro wastewater meetings, the finance committee, and also met with the chair. And then I also attended East County Economic Development Council meetings as well. And I'm happy to further discuss, we did have the capital improvement projects discussions that we had a workshop, a similar workshop that people wanna come and participate in those conversations and talk about not just storm drains, but all capital infrastructure. We can all nerd out on that, and all in favor of doing that.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Member Tim Castle.
Thank you. I attended the East County Economic Development Council. Seems like a long time ago, but I think this is the first report since then. I also attended the memorial for Tom Clabby. It was extremely meaningful. Our former city manager spoke there, and so did Councilmember Jones, and our mayor spoke, spoke there. It was wonderful. I think Jerry Selby was there. So many people were there. It was wonderful. And I attended three MTS meetings, one special meeting and two regular meetings. Of course, the big topic is the strike. And I'm just really pleased that the South Bay, East County Transit Ed workers are back to work. They approved a tentative agreement over the weekend. The paratransit strike is still going on, at least last I heard. And I also chaired the Accessibility Services Advisory Committee of MTS. And that's, that's the report. I usually get cut off, I must have been shorter than usual. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I attended the Legal California Cities Act of American Caucus monthly meeting, the Standag Executive Committee, the Standag Board of the Records meeting. I also attended and presented at the San Diego County Bar Association Leadership Academy, and I spoke about living with purpose and vision. I also attended the Race Emergency Day event here at Berry Street Park, and I spoke and presented a proclamation. I attended the County of San Diego Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony, representing Lemon Grove. And I also attended the Ruby Awards, that award, then it happens annually in support of building affordable housing for people. I attended the Electrical Training Institute Graduation Ceremony, and represented Lemon Grove. And we actually had a few folks there, a few folks there that work from Lemon Grove, brought by the Lemon Grove Food Distribution. I attended Juneteenth festivals, and I attended the memorial service for Tom Clabby. And I was able to share a few words about his life, but also his legacy. And that completes my report.
I will now turn this over to our city manager to give her report.
I have no report to report, given this late hour and it's not on, so I disagree.
Thank you. And we do not have closed session tonight. And so with that said, this city council meeting tonight will be adjourned, but just note that our next meeting will be held on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at six p.m. I just know the city council meeting for July fourth is canceled due to the Fourth of July holiday. So with that said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.